Right now, even if our technology is not perfect, and I apologize for that. The next speaker is, and again, here I go again, Rafael Richter. Did I get that right?
You did.
Oh. What is that? Stop pockets right twice a day, is that you?
Thank you.
So, again, would you mind speaking as loudly as you can?
I don't mind speaking loudly, thank you. So, thank you to the Commission for the opportunity to comment. My name is Rafael Richter, I'm the co-founder of Legalized Transport, a provisionally licensed third-party transporter. The overarching message from my comments today are that market as it exists now is extremely unfavorable to smaller and mid-sized businesses, despite your best attempts thus far. And if the Commission does indeed want a diverse and equitable marketplace, you must take decisive and immediate action through these revised regulations to address this problem in many sections of the regulations. So my first comment is that your proposed current delivery-to-consumer draft regulations are unfriendly to consumers, and they're also very friendly to big business. Consumers, first off, as you've heard from many people, should not be subject to video recording in their own homes via body cams. It also seems onerous that they should have to go through an in-person pre-verification check at the associated retail establishment from which they're going to get those products delivered. High-value packages of all kinds work far more than marijuana deliveries are. Currently, there's a lot of fear. It doesn't seem like it really should be any different. The currently drafted regulations will force all delivery companies to purchase products from retailers, which at this point are mostly large multi-state operators that already have a huge market advantage. This works directly and inevitably against the equity the Commission is striving for within the industry. Why would the Commission set up a system where the large entities, most of which are vertically-integrated medical operators, that had priority to convert already and have already grossed over 230 million?
I think we'll see. Sorry, I dropped you. Can you see if your microphone's working, please?
Certainly.
Thank you very much.
Do I get to start again?
No.
So, they've already grossed over 230 million in sales, and they're, with this system you're setting up, they're going to get richer and more profitable off the operators that you're hoping to empower through the home delivery regulations. It's clear that it'll make for an easier regulatory environment, but it's going to subject delivery companies and their would-be equity owners to unfavorable market conditions. It's been widely reported that retailers in the state were displeased that they would not have a shot at being able to deliver their products directly to consumers themselves. And it does seem like this is a workaround where retailers end up getting what they want, which is ultimately the profit for the sale, on the backs of these social equity delivery businesses. I would recommend that the Commission consider allowing delivery companies to pre-verify customers themselves, and that delivery companies be allowed to warehouse a reasonable amount of product themselves. And in addition to deliver products, not only from retailers, but also directly from craft cooperatives, micro businesses, transport and distribution companies, manufacturers, and other licensed establishments. Naturally, you could require all of the same security and compliance safeguards while creating a more diverse section of the industry without sacrificing public safety. Please keep in mind that if the Commission subjects delivery companies to an overly onerous regulatory environment, the state will either end up with very small operations or very large operations with very little room in the middle. It only takes a fairly simple back-of-the-envelope calculation to determine that the current model businesses will be forced into by these proposed regulations will not be very appealing to many entrepreneurs. And I believe the viability of these delivery businesses should be a top concern for the Commission as these regulations are finalized, it was after all the will of voters. My second comment is that the definition of marijuana transporter does not include the word "purchase," while including the words "transporting," "storage," "sale," and "distribution." Adding this term would provide clarity to operators in this part of the industry, as the terms "sale" and "distribution" strongly suggest purchases allowed as well. And finally, I'd just like to say that it seems like it would help the industry and the Commission if as many medical and adult-use regulations were aligned as possible. There are several areas, from initial startup capitals and home delivery regulations, that would be best served if they were aligned both medical and adult-use.
Okay. Thank you, Rafael.
Appreciate it.
Did you submit this in writing?
I will be.
Next speaker is Giles Backdame. All right, next speaker is Ed DeSouza.
Good morning, Ed.
Good morning.
I want to thank you, everybody, for listening to me this morning. I understand that you guys have a very hard job ahead of you, and I appreciate everything that you've done, although I've been very critical during the past couple of years. I'm speaking to you today, as my, people who don't know me, my name is Ed DeSouza, I represent my company River Run Gardens, we are a micro-business applicant that have been bleeding for quite some time now. But I just don't speak for myself, I speak for other micro businesses, craft cooperatives, SE and EE applicants, people like John from right here, who are trying to maybe better living for themselves. Short of getting on my knees and begging, I'm asking the Commission to please look at the locals in this state to get a business up and going. The regulations haven't followed, I've been paying for a warehouse for over two years, been at this since 2017. I don't know how much longer I can go. A couple of weeks ago, my daughter, my 11-year-old daughter woke up and said, "Dad, I had a dream yesterday that you got your license, and we can actually go ahead and do things that other kids can do." This is the type of struggle that myself and other people are going through. The big money that have been granted licenses, they don't go through this, they don't need to. The bottom line is what they care about. Right now, not only am I hurting, but the veterans group up in Haverhill that I am saying, "I'm going to help you," they're hurting. The drug awareness program in Newburyport that we're going to assist is hurting. The homelessness prevention, the food shelters, these are things that we are looking to do with the money we make. At 5,000 square feet for my license, I'm only going to be able to flower about 1300, because the rest is going to be vegetation clones and everything else. I'm not making a lot of money, but I'm willing to give it back to the community. I understand that your hands are tied on what you can do. So I haven't stopped at the payments, I've been working with the state legislature, the Senate. I hear back from them and say, "Well, there's nothing we can do." So at what point can, I mean, where do we turn? If the legislator says, "Well, that's up to the CCC," and the CCC lawyers say, "Well, that's up to the legislature," we're left here. But we're not bleeding, we're down to half a pint. We don't know what to do anymore. It's hard enough to follow the regulations, which we're doing to a T, but then to sit in line and watch your name never get called, it's very hard. So I beg of you, please, local citizens deserve the right to get into this market. I've watched RMDs get their provisional, get their final, and then two months later sell to Canadians. And I'm not against free enterprise, but we all should have an opportunity here. If it lasts much longer, we're not going to be able to do this. And you're going to have a market where it's going to be dominated by the players that have already been in it. It's hard to fathom, it's hard to sleep at night, it's hard to sit there and say, "You know what, kids, we're having ramen noodles again." And I understand, this is something that I took on, and this is something that others have taken on, but it's for the betterment of our families. I wish I could be medical, I want to sell my product strictly to medical, but I can't vertically integrate. Please, look into this. Now, for the activist in me, I will say, I find it highly ironic that you have a police officer up here advocating for body cams where their own union says, "We aren't going to put body cams on to protect our citizens." I want to thank you. Please, please listen to the locals.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much, I really appreciate it, Ed. I really, again, request respectfully that there are no applause, no audience reaction, okay? Thank you. The next speaker is Ornella Quinn.
Hi. Hi, so my name is Ornella Quinn, and I'd like to thank you all for this opportunity. I'd like to speak to you specifically today to the expansion of the industry with regards to social consumption cafes. I do agree with Chief Carmichael that this should be a non-starter. So, I live in Berlin, Mass. My profession has been as a medical engineer and as a youth minister, my vocation is really as a wife and a mother of two sons. So let me begin by saying that I can appreciate the difficulties and the complexities of trying to establish a structure to regulate marijuana industry. But it is my belief that this structure should first and foremost protect the public from addiction and marijuana-related harms. So, how can we begin to expand an industry before we have fully understood the impacts on public health, especially on those most vulnerable? So I'm sure you would agree that we're seeing an increase in teen use of high potency marijuana, and by that I mean potency's about 85% and higher. I'm so surprised that many studies are showing that a decreased perception of harm in states where marijuana is legalized is leading to this increase in teen use. I've seen the lives and minds of many of our youth become hijacked by the high potency weed that is being marketed and perceived as safe, pure, and in many cases, good for you. I've seen my own family, in my own family, grades and ambition and zest for life plummet. I've seen teens that were previously joyful and confident become severely depressed, anxious, and paralyzed. I've witnessed terrifying episodes of psychosis by regular use of this drug. I invite you to visit any high school and have a candid conversation with the principals there about the current climate of the school. Be confident you'll find similar things to what I just mentioned, much of it fueled by an epidemic of vaping high potency THC, daily large numbers of marijuana cartridges. So according to the statement of concern signed by over 50 leading doctors and researchers and healthcare professionals across the state, this risk of psychosis has increased five times for regular users. There's a significant risk of schizophrenia, anxiety, depression, and bipolar disorder, and in many cases, there's a significant impairment to cognitive function that may not be reversible. The risk of addiction can be as high as 35 to 50% for many of our youth and teens. So just... However, the risk is great enough to require policies which discourage use. If we regulate and govern the commercial marijuana market not as an ordinary commodity, but rather using a public health framework, this would help to protect the most vulnerable in our populations. The current regulations already in operation must prioritize public health and safety before expanding the industry. Setting THC potency limits, setting product-serving limits, and providing public health education that actually reaches the public, a consistent, clear, and accurate message about the potential risks to the users, a message that balances the false claims out there. Thank you. So, I guess, common sense would dictate that we need to have a regulatory framework that prioritizes public health over an industry's interests. May I remind you that this, an industry is being infiltrated and applauded by big tobacco. It would be unconscionable to allow ease regulation on social consumption of marijuana before fully understanding the long-term effects of the drug on our health. It would be negligent of any of us to continue to drive down the perception of harm while our youth are struggling to get a handle on the devastating health impact it is having on their generation. So as servants of the people, I invite you to reflect upon the dignity of human life and those whose needs are our serving.
Thank you, Ornella. Our next speaker is Teresa Hoggins. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Teresa Hoggins, I'm from Harvard, Massachusetts. I have five children, ages 15 to 24. I'm also on the district wellness committee for the school. And I'm very concerned, as a parent, I'm very concerned about the situation with our young people. I'm concerned about the expansion of the marijuana industry into social consumption sites and delivery, and the impact it has on our children. I don't know if you're aware of this, but it's very easy for teens and underage young adults to obtain marijuana in Massachusetts. The diversion of high-potency THC products, including vapes and edibles, to Massachusetts youth is growing, a growing concern, and it's actually happening. We are already seeing an increase in the use of high-potency THC vapes at school. Ask any high school principal, and they will tell you, underage kids are vaping high potency THC marijuana in high school, in the bathrooms, and even in the classrooms. The THC vapes are smokeless and odorless. Because it is smokeless and odorless, it's virtually impossible for teachers and administrators to detect. Vape pens are small and easy to hide, and kids are very drug-stabbing. They are no longer carrying vape pens in their backpacks, their pockets, or even their shoes and socks. They are hiding them in their bras and their underwear, so if they're searched at school, they will not be detected. Or if the room at home is searched by their parents, they won't find anything. Many of you know, we currently have a vaping epidemic among adolescents and young adults in our country. One of the biggest risk factors for addiction is starting to use addictive substances as an adolescent, because the brain is not fully developed until age 25. Studies show middle school is the age when most adolescents are introduced to drugs. Most kids are offered marijuana, nicotine, and/or alcohol for the first time when they're still in middle school. Marijuana and nicotine can easily be bathed by adolescents and be virtually undetected by caring adults such as parents and teachers. Just earlier this week, a study came out saying that young people aged 10 to 24 who vape are three and a half times more likely to also vape marijuana. A study published in the prestigious British Medical Journal, Lancet Psychiatry, in 2014 showed clear and consistent associations and dose-response relations between the frequency of adolescent cannabis use and all adverse young adult outcomes. After covarian adjustment compared with individuals who had never used cannabis, those who were daily users before age 17 years old had clear reductions in the odds of high school completion and degree attainment, and substantially increased odds of later cannabis use dependence, use of other illicit drugs, and suicide attempt. The suicide attempt ratio was almost sevenfold. The perception of harm for marijuana has gone down dramatically over the past 10 years for young people. Compounding the problem, the increase in the THC content of marijuana has been up exponentially in the last 10 years, with... Many of those young people don't even know that you can become addicted to marijuana, because they have not been educated as to the harmful effects of marijuana. The higher potency marijuana, as found in the vape pen, ranges from 70 to 90%, and even more than 90%. The marijuana today is very addictive, just like with other drugs such as opioids, we know the higher the dose, the more addicting the drug. One of the unintended consequences of this high potency THC marijuana is that many young people are becoming addicted, as I said. Drug addiction is a pediatric disease. What does that mean? It means that most drug addiction starts in adolescence. Starting addictive drug use in adolescence is one of the three biggest risk factors for drug addiction. According to the Center on Addiction, teen substance use, or addiction, is the origin of the largest preventable and most costly public health problem in America today. 90% of Americans who meet the medical criteria for addiction started using addictive substances before the age of 18. Since this high potency pot is causing young people to become addicted to pot, what happens to those kids who become addicted? Some won't finish high school, many won't finish college, many will need a drug treatment program.
Teresa, I need you to point out this question.
So, I have a lot more I'll submit, but I'd like to say, what I'd like to say is that I'd like you to really please consider putting the brakes on this pilot program for social consumption and delivery, and so we can educate our kids more about the harmfulness of marijuana to the developing brain. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Our next speaker is Bill Flynn.
Good afternoon, Commission. Thanks for having me. My name is Bill Flynn. I'm a cancer survivor, prohibition survivor, advocate, president of the Mass Cannabis Reform Coalition. I'm an equity and empowered applicant. I have a hemp farm that's bleeding out. My group pushed for the hemp farm bill, and it's bleeding out because of funds we don't have. I'm trying to reach out to start a delivery service, a delivery service that I did a few years ago, which was running great. Cat, all our paperwork, all together, everything's doing good. I guess we were doing too well, we got shut down when medical had happened. Open up the door for Big Box to come in and take over. Okay, again, my application's put in, still haven't heard anything, it hasn't even started yet, but due to restrictions, regulations, overburden, it's keeping me out of the game. I've been fighting for this over the 25 years, going into my 30th year here as an advocate. I can't go anywhere. This is something I fought for, the people of Massachusetts have. Okay? As far as social consumption, where are my medical patients supposed to go? Social consumption was the whole idea of having this, that people would have a place to go, don't have a place to go. But keep on up with all those bar rooms, right? Keep that going. We don't want to over-regulate all that stuff, okay? As far as the ignorance that still falls here that's going on, it's incredible, incredible. People advocating against, trying to make people a little bit better in the community, help people that have been struggling get into these programs? Ridiculous, ridiculous. As Bonnie Frank said in the beginning, all right? We warned you. And I'm happy to stand here and look at you and say, "We warned you a year ago this is going to happen." Okay? And here I am sitting, going broke, bleeding out, because I can't move forward because of the funds, no funds. And then here to somebody, to find somebody that could help me out, could turn around and take my business away, because they have money? I'll say it, bite my tongue, but BS, all around, all around. The idea of having this done, our advocacy group doing, was to make sure that the small craft businesses in Massachusetts come out from underground... And help patients, help everybody. Again, like Ed says, "Well, not here, we don't expect to be millionaires, but we expect to put money in our pocket." But when you got millionaires coming into our state, telling us what to do, telling the Commission what to do, I find it very, very wrong, and it's going against everything that Massachusetts was about, all right? Illinois opened up, they've got a great program going, from what I understand, expungement, people are getting out of jail, we're still dragging our feet. How long are we going to keep dragging it? I'm tired of being dragged around, okay? Many, we asked you to reach out to MassCann, to discuss this, you never did, okay? Again, like I said, a letter came out to you, we warned you, and like you said with Bonnie Frank in the beginning, he started this in '72. There were guidelines you could look back at, looked at history. Again, an agricultural commodity that's put out as alcohol, ridiculousness, still going on. And the fact that people have to come here and, you know, attack other people that are here because of the way they feel. If people understood the endocannabinoid system, when mothers milk, breastfeeding mother is giving cannabinoids to the child, to the child, because the mother produces this. You're going to start your addiction then? Wake up, tired of the crap.
Thank you, Bill. Our next speaker is Catherine Ripken.
Good afternoon. So I too was part of the MassCann that's been advocating for years. And finally, you know, running up to the State House, educating the legislators, we finally got it passed. They kicked the can down to CCC, so you've all had regular, no, 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 they, all of a sudden, the House and the Senate had to have testimony. So we did that, then you all had to have testimony, and then you kicked the can down to the towns. Towns freaked out, they were totally unprepared, they didn't know, and, you know, 300 towns, and for us few activists to go and try and hit pay each town would be miserable and hostile. So anyhow, make these, so, okay. I got an inheritance, an aunt died. She was an army nurse, she worked in the mass units of Vietnam and Korea, and she never married, had never had kids, and there was a group of other nurses in the same position, they all willed to each other, sort of like a 20. My aunt was the last one standing. So, when I received this inheritance, it was like a group of women, they, on the other side of the veil, gave us the means to try to do something good for the community. We formed a co-op, and according to the rules, okay, we went, you know, found a yes town, we're going to farm there. All of a sudden, the rules, you know, kind of changed, no, if you want to do a, you've got a THC license, you have a property first. Farms don't count, and the town said, "The property has to be located in the industrial section." The dirty part of town, we're going to start growing medicine, and it's, okay, we'll try to go along with this, we can roll. We've got a property, it was filthy, dirty, filthy, 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 dirty, some, you know, it was a company that was welding. So, we walked in, the sides of the walls were, the insulation was dripping diesel grease. We had that all stripped out, we had placed steam clean, put in insulation, walls to keep that insulation in place, because we don't want little pink threads all over our plants. Sanded the floor, done epoxy, so that, you know, you clean it with a squeegee, we're going to make this as clean as the army nurses would appreciate it. So, unfortunately, I am declaring default. Money's gone, and I can't think of anything else to say.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mackenzie Ferguson.
So I want to start off by saying thank you, and I know there's a lot of speakers following me, so I want to keep this short. So our company, Verta, provides a web-based platform for cannabis delivery, facilitates it from the purchase from a user to the delivery to a user. We're operational in one small town out in Canada, and Massachusetts would be our first U.S. state center. We're here to testify in support of the draft regulations in terms of achieving three key goals. If implemented as currently written, the draft regulations would help achieve these three key things I was about to mention. Number one, helping delivery-only retail businesses, not gig economy drivers. We need to put the money into actual businesses that are going to contribute to the Commonwealth. Reducing the barriers to entry for economic empowerment, social equity businesses, by cutting down on upfront costs. And the third goal here is creating an accessible, inconvenient, regulated delivery market to help combat illicit gray market delivery. And just to provide a little bit of, I don't know why I didn't get comfortable first, but, yeah, so just to provide a little bit of background on what Verta does and how we're working to actually achieve these goals. We built out our platform in a number of interesting ways, in our business model, where, number one, we take nothing from the delivery companies. Number two, by signing up into Verta's platform, what we do is we completely get rid of the overhead costs associated with marketing and sales by helping these delivery-only retailers engage directly with retailers and users. And finally, we built in compliant measures that, I can go on and on about, but I'll save that for our written testimony, to help get these, get these delivery businesses up and running fast and compliant. And so we ask that the CCC do not, does not, we ask that the CCC does not directly and significantly alter the draft regulations in support of these three goals. And so if that happens, we can create a strong legalized delivery system and start transitioning... and start transitioning from illicit and gray market deliveries into legal markets. And on that note, if there are any, uh, potential delivery applicants that are interested, we'd be eager to hear from you and help actually build out your business from the ground up. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next speaker is Angela Brown.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, thank you. Thank you, Commission, for hosting this event and all your hard work and dedication to the industry. My name is Angela Brown, and I'm the co-founder of T-Bear Inc., a provisionally licensed manufacturer, excuse me, provisionally licensed product manufacturer that hopes to have their final license next month. As one of the very few locally-owned general applicants to get through the licensing process, I can say it truly is double the cost and double the amount of money. It's been extremely expensive and a very long process, as you've heard from many. But not all entities are the same. And despite being the same license category. Sorry about that. My group is not one that can write a five or six-figure check to our host community, although I hope we can in the future. My group and many like us in the application pipeline are residents of Massachusetts, working hard and putting absolutely everything we have on the line to claim our spot in the industry. I believe that tripling the license fees will directly hurt groups like us. There is only so much money as small businesses have, especially when starting a business and being pre-revenue. We small businesses want to ensure that this is a fair and equitable industry. As you've heard, we want to give back as much as we can to our communities, those communities who have been harmed, and of course, the social equity program. But an additional $10,000 a year is a huge increase, and not one I believe should be applied. I do not believe any of the license fees should be increased. But if it does have to increase, why would the cost of product manufacturer license be higher than that of a retailer, laboratory, social consumption, or delivery? The cost should be in line with other license groups. As you know, a product manufacturer is in the middle, and we must buy and sell at wholesale costs, meaning the margins are already extremely small. I would strongly urge the Commission to hold off on increasing any of the fees until we have a more robust marketplace to allow businesses of all sizes to get up and running, to support the cannabis businesses of Massachusetts first, and give us a chance to get our place in the market solidified. Let's see what the industry can be before we move ahead and keep too many out. I would also like to thank you for adding in a 10-milligram variance for testing. That's greatly appreciated and standard with other markets. I would also like to ask that, if possible, to license more cultivators. The wholesale cost of being offered at $4,500 makes it extremely hard for us to not charge astronomical moat to the consumers to at least cover our charges. I would also ask that the Commission looks into how standalone cultivators and product manufacturers can sample our products without having a third-party retail. Under vertical integration, they can easily move things to other metric system, get sampling to provide to themselves to make sure the products are of the quality they expect, or to get into other stores. This is something product manufacturers and cultivators will need as a business becomes more, the marketplace becomes more robust and competitive. I would also say that I have to voice my opinion that body cameras have no place in home delivery for cannabis. I believe. Uh, the final thing, if I have a minute, is the handicap that we have on marketing. It is extremely impossible, the way it is stated, for a business like myself to actually grow market share and understanding of what we're doing in the marketplace to those 21-plus adults. If a person is in a retail, their license has been verified by a licensed retailer, why am I, when I'm there, not able to give them some sort of collateral or some sort of marketing piece that they can take home and use with my brand on it? Thank you guys so much for your time. Have a wonderful day.
Thank you, Angela. Our next speaker is Brian Huesig.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon to you all. Thanks so much for the opportunity to address the CAR regulations and the proposed provisions. Uh, I'm Brian Huesig and co-founder of T-Bear Inc., a provisionally licensed product manufacturer here in Massachusetts. Today, I wanted to bring up three points. Um, first of that would be the prohibitive marketing practices put forth in the CAR regulations and further prohibited in the revised regulations. Um, prohibitive marketing practices include advertising margin of branding marijuana products and clothing, cups, drink holders, apparel, accessories, electronic equipment accessories, and furthermore. Um, I was at the Boston Greenway this weekend, got this with the purchase of a beer after I was made sure that I was 21-plus. I don't see why a marijuana dispensary or product manufacturer should be able to provide those same benefits or gifts to their consumers to drive consumer awareness and product trust. Prohibiting these marketing practices would severely handicap just Massachusetts businesses. We're competing at a national level. This marketplace is opening up to be consumer-brand-driven market, and we're competing against groups that are coming from out of state, out of country, that aren't limited to how they can distribute, disseminate their brand and information. And we are, and that can severely handicap the locally-only businesses here. Uh, my second topic I wanted to touch on was product sampling. Currently, there isn't a way for independent cultivators, manufacturers, and to an extent retailers to distribute sampling. I think this could easily be addressed through metric, similar to independent lab testing, that a certain segment of a product could be allotted for samples distributed out internally or to external licensed entities. And the last topic I want to talk about is supply constraints for raw materials. There's quite a bit of issue with being able to receive flour or trimmed product today in the, in the industry. Through those constraints, there's, there'll be for a group to make an external transfer of contaminated product that can be remediated, such as cold or mild dew. That's a, that's a service that extraction company can offer to groups, cultivators. There's gonna be a lot of that within new cultivators coming online. If there was a way to transfer that within the metric system, that would help alleviate some of those supply issues and create more product in the marketplace. That's really it. Thanks to you all for your time. I'm looking to see how the.
Thank you, Brian. Uh, next speaker is Paul Marion. I tried to translate the audio.
Yes, my comments.
Okay, thank you very much. This is for future reference.
Sorry.
Okay, David Turisi.
Good afternoon, David. How are you?
Well, I'm good, you know?
Well, uh, thank you very much for having us here today. Got to do glasses though. Sorry. So my name is David Turisi. I am the executive director of the Comball Dispensary Association. Uh, it's a trade association that was formed several years ago from the RMDs. We currently have 30 members and represent about 42 of the dispensaries. Um, our members are vertically-integrated operators who want to run better than anybody. Would just like to cultivate, manufacture, and sell cannabis in our state. The challenges are numerous, but by working collaboratively with CCC, we feel that we are well on our way to establishing a secure, equitable, and diverse marketplace for Massachusettsian consumers. We have a few comments we'd like to make on your draft regulations. Uh, the first one would be your renewal procedure. That is CM 95 500.104. This requirement would force licensees to shoulder the burden of showing where host communities spend the amounts paid to towns by licensees. This would require us to add addendums to our current HCA's. Our biggest concern, quite frankly, is this something that we feel is, is an issue as far as the towns not spending the money appropriately or as they should. But it's something that we feel like, it shouldn't be a requirement for renewal because it's something that we can control. All these towns are not as transparent as they should be when spending the money we pay to HCA's. So we would suggest that you replace this requirement with a licensee will make a reasonable attempt in writing to the documentation from their host community regarding the use of funds, um, the use of funds. Um, marketing and advertising, a couple of people before us talked about this, but specifically on your prohibitive practices, 500.105 4B6 discounts. Uh, we believe prohibiting use of discounts and customer loyalty programs and other practices is an infringement on a retailer's ability to run an efficient, prosperous business. Uh, there are numerous reasons to provide discounts to consumers, especially to veterans and patients who choose not to enroll in the state medical program. Many operators will choose to provide a discount to patients with an expired or pending medical registration to offset the cost of a tax on a adult's purchase. Employee discounts are a way to reward people who work hard for us every day, as well as to prevent that from their. Purchases on the listed market. We need the ability to offer discounts as any retailer does for multiple other reasons, such as satisfying a disgruntled customer, reducing price for inferior product, or a product nearing expiration date. Packaging of marijuana marijuana products, 500.105 6A. This is a new requirement that exit package not be able to be opened easily with scissors or knives if appealing to children. It's a concern of us because we are not aware of many bags that cannot be opened with a sharp object. Um, we hope you strike this line. Uh, cash handling has been mentioned by a couple of people. Uh, we have talked to you in the past. We believe these new regulations for cash handling are unfounded, unnecessary, and are overreached by the Commission. We believe the entire section should be strictly under regulations. We have been safely and securely handling cash deposits for many years and have done so without incident. I actually have a lot more to do. So, uh, you know, I'll be submitting these, the rest of this electronically, but I just want to make a point. Um, you know, your, your tenure as commissioners is coming up in two years. And coincidentally, my tenure as executive director coincides with that. I think I've been to as many meetings as anyone else has been. And I know, I don't always agree with you. I know a lot of those room don't agree with you. But I can unequivocally say, you and your staff, especially your executive director, who's probably taking much needed vacation right now, have worked diligently and thoroughly. And you're not gonna satisfy all of us. But anyone who questions your efforts is sort of a mistake. So thank you. I continue to report and I'll get this off.
Thank you, David. And I normally don't respond to testifiers, but I have three years left.
Thank you.
Thanks, David. Uh, next speaker is Enid Pope. Uh, next speaker is, oh, I'm sorry. I paused, I didn't see you. No, my fault. I truly, I truly apologize.
So, hi, guys. How are you?
Good afternoon, how are you?
I'm doing well. Thank you for this opportunity. Um, I wanted to just touch on a number of things as an economic empowerment applicant. Um, I think the last time I talked to you guys, I disclosed that I did not qualify for social equity. And after reviewing the draft regulations and even the regulations that were posted last year, uh, one of the things I was prepared to talk about is encouraging adjusting that to AMI and even reducing it even further for people who have student loan debt. But then when I stopped and think about it, you're only talking about 122 people. That's not a large group of people across the state. And if you open it up to people who are economic empowerment applicants, and especially those who stated that they would hire people with quarries and whack them round people, I think that they should be included regardless of income. Uh, primarily because you guys can always eliminate and take action if these people do not include it in their license. Because this is the only group that's actually measured and evaluated for reaching these goals that you guys set. If social equity applies, they're general applicants. Economic empowerment, we have to uphold that. And as somebody who is a champion for diversity um, in all industries, but especially ones that are regulated, we see the banking industry is not changing. You had a number of people from large banks, even some that are represented like State Street here in this area, where Congress asked them, what is your succession claim? Do you have a woman? Do you have a person of color? And this is banking, a very old industry. So here, this is a new industry where there are people and language that you are targeting, people who are disenfranchised. And to put people in a situation where they can't help them and they have honest intentions, that's not a good thing. So I encourage you guys to eliminate that. The other thing that I would like to encourage is to avoid shifting the population solely to two categories. I think that all categories should, it should be encouraged to have diversity and inclusion in all of it. However, um, some of the language that I read in the draft regulations concern because it almost seemed like this is a consolation for not having any place in cultivation, manufacturing, or other categories. So I would like to just respectfully ask to consider changing the language where it says overall participation rate for the evaluation criteria for social consumption and also for delivery pilot programs. The reason why is because that language is a little bit too vague. And I think that whatever efforts you guys are doing with economic empowerment and social equity, you guys should be credited for making strides to help increase participation and equity for those individuals. So I think to eliminate that language, because it could be, you know, the industry as a whole. It could be just, you know, in Massachusetts. But I think that you need to incorporate language that shows that type of responsibility and accountability you guys are taking on. Um, the next is also, can't touch on everything, but I will say that I also feel like, um, you guys also need to be careful to not reinforce stigmas and stereotypes. Everyone touched on the body cam. That is disturbing to me because if this is medicine, even if it's alcohol, whatever, there's some major concerns, especially considering the population, people with quarries that you are targeting. You have to be monochromatic. Also, um, yeah, try not to reinforce stereotypes. I think that there are a lot of people who can negotiate fair contracts. And to be honest with you, I don't want to end up on an episode of American Greed, either as a victim or as a hustler. And I can tell you, I've talked to a lot of hustlers. So I hope, um, thanks, continue to offer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next speaker is Dr. Swani Chen. Uh, next speaker, I believe, is Bots Kelly. If I have it correct. Jared Christopher. And once we're done, I'll come back in a moment and make sure that nobody stepped out for a moment. Next speaker is Catherine Mullin. Next speaker is Yina Miller Brown. Uh, next speaker is Hillary King. Good afternoon, Howard.
Hi, Howard.
Howard.
Thanks. Uh, my name's Hillary King. I'm here today as a medical cannabis patient, a consumer, and a professional working in the industry. Uh, there's a lot to cover about my testimony today. There's a lot to cover about my testimony today. We'll be focused on the proposed regulations for delivery-only retail, as you call it. First of all, the body camera requirement is unnecessary. It's a preservation of privacy and creates exorbitant costs for hardware and the storage of video for licensees. I don't think it's right to call this a retail license. The proposed model would be better described as a retail marijuana delivery courier. Your regulations that you propose allow a licensee to pick up and drop off only. It's the brick and mortar retailer that's actually processing and profiting from the transaction with the customer. It's not retailing. Your delivery-only retailer will just collect a fee for their service, but the name is misleading. It's unfair to call it a retail license when you're not actually retailing. If they were allowed to obtain marijuana and marijuana products from other licensees at wholesale prices and then operate their own retail business to their customer network, we could call it a retail license, but that's not what's happening here. We need to either change the name or change the substance of this regulation to reflect an actual retail business model. If the commission wants to succeed in its goal of full participation in the industry of having current illicit market operators transition into the regulated market, we need an actual delivery-only retail license. This is how the cannabis industry has operated for decades, producing their own products and sourcing products at wholesale from other producers, marking it up to retail and then selling to their customers. There's a, there's a fine line between craft and regulations that will facilitate a viable and inclusive market and regulating to protect the profits of one type of business or one type of business owner over another. This lack of a delivery-only retail license will only serve to funnel more profits and market share to the business and unfairly disadvantage small businesses and existing operators who want to become legal. Don't provide a path for these operators to continue doing business in the way that they are already doing business. They're not going to transition to the legal market. Further enforcement isn't the answer. So to view the existing illicit industry as criminal and something to be combated and eradicated is an attitude that I don't think should have a place in this conversation. You know, what's happening here is it came to a kind of colonialism where existing operators have been doing this for years and years. And most of what's shaping out is that well-capitalized folks with no history in the industry are coming in and saying, thanks for all the hard work that you've done while risking your freedoms in the face of an unjust prohibition, but we're just going to take over now. Thanks. We need to be creating a license structure tailored to this unique industry. Alcohol prohibition ended in 1933, and this post-prohibition green rush of cannabis industry is happening in our modern age with more people, more technology, and for those at the top, more capital to flow at getting a foothold in this industry. And this is happening, you know, more than at any other time in history. So we can't compare it to alcohol. We can't compare it to tobacco. We need to create a unique structure and approach. Commission of planning, I'm pretty much hoping that you're not going to make this an actual, you know, retailing license this time around. I hope you do, but, you know, if not, you know, creating a license for glorified pizza delivery boy and calling it a retail license is not the way. So you need to either change the name or create an actual retail license.
Thank you, David. Elias Kelson. Go ahead. Thank you. David Schwartz. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having us. My name is David Schwartz and this is Chris Mustard. We're here representing, excuse me, we're here representing International Protective Services, which is a division of the Snyder Security Group. For those of you who don't know us, we're based out of
I'm sorry.
For those of you who don't know us, we're based out of Kansas, Mass. And we provide licensed and insured, unarmed and armed, uniformed and covert security and courier services. Our courier, covert courier transport division specializes in the safe and secure transfer of our clients' deposits same day to the banking establishment of their choice. The courier division has been providing transports for over 30 years for Massachusetts, for clients in Massachusetts outside of cannabis industry, including the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for the past 21 years. The courier division has also been providing transports for the cannabis industry in Mass since the beginning stages with initial medicinal clients who may begin taking their cash transports to the bank. We started by taking their transports to the only bank that was accepting their money, the Century Bank. From then until now, we have provided service to 30 cannabis client locations and are scheduled to provide service for eight additional locations as soon as they are officially open for business. We are now delivering deposits to four different banking establishments, which have all accepted our company as an approved vendor. Being as involved as we have been with the cash handling in the mass cannabis industry, we would like to take this opportunity to discuss and review the proposed cash handling procedures that have been listed on the website. We would like to respectfully recommend that the GPS requirements in the two-way communication requirement be removed as a rule in the cash handling procedures. Both outlined items will directly affect the covert manner in which we provide our services. From our perspective, the cash transport is different than the product transport and as such should be handled differently. We've worked out to provide time insurance, which covers the client's deposits from the time it is issued to our courier until the bank confirms receiving the deposit. Based upon above and all of the responsibilities that the cannabis licensees already have to deal with, we do not believe there is any reason for the cannabis licensee to be involved with the cash handling process once our courier signs the receipt and takes possession of the deposit. As a covert service, we make every attempt to limit the specific information related to our couriers in transit. We feel that this has helped us, our success in keeping our courier personnel safe and the cash that they are handling secure. In addition, this has also helped to keep our clients, employees, and visitors safe and the bank's employees as well safe. If any of our clients have questions or concerns related to their specific deposit transport, we have a 24-hour operations center that is fully staffed seven days a week whom we be contacted via our phone or email. Our operations personnel have immediate access to our couriers who can be reached for any necessary information. Whether the licensee chooses an armored transport or an alternative option such as IPS, the primary requirements for cash handling should include the following items. Number one, the company performing the transports must be licensed with the state of Mass. Number two, the company performing the transports must be fully insured to provide cannabis cash transports. Number three, the transports must be performed in an unmarked vehicle. Number four, the prohibition of transporting cash and marijuana or marijuana products in the vehicle together. The company, number five, the company performing the transports must receive approval from the financial institutions where the deposits will occur. We really want to thank you for taking the time with us. We would like to make ourselves available for continued discussions related to this topic in order to answer any questions and discuss the matter further at a time that may be better for the commission.
Thank you.
And look forward to your responses regarding this.
Thank you.
We also want to let you know that there are many of the different clients that are looking to do this themselves, but if they have the ability to do that, they should be able to do that too.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Brian Adams.
Good afternoon. How are you doing?
Not so bad, thank you.
Thanks for having us all here today. To introduce myself, my name is Brian Adams. I'm the co-founder of Hudson Botanical Processing. We applied for a manufacturing license about four months ago. I was born and raised here in Massachusetts, but spent the past few years working on Colorado's cannabis industry. Although there were some flaws and shortsightedness in the regulations promulgated in Colorado, the regulators have firm grasp on the industry and have effectively regulated the market to protect public safety while also allowing businesses thrive and grow economically. Just this past year, five years after legalization, Colorado is now allowing social consumption and delivery because they're ready for it. Here in Massachusetts, we need to take a similar approach. Let's walk before we run. I do support social consumption and cannabis delivery. However, we need to focus on getting this industry off the ground before we introduce these more complex license types. I would hate to see the Commonwealth light up more than we can chew and effectively shut out many entrepreneurs because we do not have adequate resources or infrastructure in place to approve licenses in a timely manner. We are trying to do too much too quickly and many people lose because of these actions. On another subject, I would also like to propose a new license type that is only open for social equity and economic empowerment applicants. I believe we should explore a license type to allow for businesses to offer temporary work help for the cannabis industry. Although the cannabis industry needs temp workers all over the place, the example of a small cultivator applies best. When it comes time to harvest the crop, more hands are needed. Instead of having to manage a large staff of part-time workers, the cultivator can contract with a licensed third-party temp business to help ease the load. This license type requires small amounts of capital in relation to other license types available and would give our social equity applicants a legitimate pathway into this new industry. Other states have this license type available and I believe we should highly consider including it here in Massachusetts. I would also like to ask if you could please post a live list of all applicants awaiting review so that everyone can see where we stand at your organization, that we know and can see the ebb and flow of applicants coming in and going with the priority application and so on and so forth. I appreciate your time and feel free to reach out at my email, which I've provided on the side in sheet. If you'd like to continue this conversation, thank you.
Thank you very much, Brian. Our next speaker is Matthew Brace. Good afternoon. Good afternoon. How's everybody? Thank you for having me, everybody. Thanks for having me, guys. And I wanted, first of all, to, before she leaves, make notice that we're losing a warrior today. This woman is opting out and it's a very sad thing and I want to say I can't.
I ran out of the slow walk. We'll let you down.
I understand. But I want to say, I'm sorry.
Well, thank you.
So, first of all, I'm going to be very brief. I'm from Coyle Brothers LLC. We are an extraction company in Harvard, Massachusetts. Hopefully. So, we submitted our license, our application, three packets 155 days ago. We know how long this is going to take. We get it. And we thank you guys for all your hard work. I watched this in California, I watched it in Colorado, I helped in Vermont. This is no easy task. We get it. But we really, really need you guys to think about these manufacturers, like Lebron and myself, several other folks as well. The manufacturers in this industry can really help you get your business off the ground. We're the guys that are going to be taking over extraction for dispensary owners, growers, people that now can't afford to do it because it's taking so long and thousands of dollars are going out the door. That's what we do. All we do is extraction, 100%. And we'll stock your shelves. We will help get this going. But I can't do anything without my provisional. Now, I will make one more point. We are the only, only people that have a host agreement in Harvard. They would only allow one in their commercial zone. I'm terrified that I'm going to timeout. And so is the chief of police, who sits on my advisory board, chief at Denmark, and Tim Brayman at Mid Street. They're like, what is going on? And I have nothing. I can't answer them. I just can't. So please, while you guys are thinking about these new regs, I've got some stuff else to submit by email for that, but please keep us manufacturers in the backs of your heads, in front of your heads, please, because we can really help you guys get these shelves stocked and get this rec program or adult use program up and running. That's it, sorry. Thank you, Matt. Yep. Our next speaker is Ethan Boat.
Good afternoon. Okay. First of all, my name is Ethan Boat. I'm a resident of Roxbury and the founder of Homegrown Boston. It's a evolving organization, but we, we generally advocate for craft cultivators, events, and home growers. I, the Homegrown Boston is also an economic empowerment recipient. And I mention that because I believe that the certification process should be reopened. I'm interested in the debate around it, but it seems to me that creating an ongoing pipeline of equity applicants, which has served the Commonwealth in the long term and specifically those communities. I might also add co-ops as, as receiving priority. I know that's something that, or I think that that business structure is something that is powerful in addressing economic inequality in the long term. And it's going to relate to some of my other comments. Want to focus on the social equi, uh, sorry, focus on the social consumption program and the pilot, which I was thrilled to see is moving forward. A couple of quick points. I'd like to suggest that we maybe reconsider and redefine smoking and indoor smoking, which I know was a real debate, but I think vaping of flower and dabs is something that could probably be figured out in a way that protects the safety of other people in the space and employees. I would also suggest that maybe we think about not co-locating social consumption launches for three to five years. I think we've already seen the advantages that retail dispensaries have had in this space and, and there's a way to prevent that by adding this. And I'd love to see consumption extended to the micro-business license and to the cultivation license. I think that can be done at small scale. I'd also love to throw, my background is in the arts primarily and organizing community around the arts. And the one-day event license, which has been advanced by MRCC and other activists, I think could be a really powerful tool for arts and cultural institutions to, to be relevant, to participate in this. I know myself have been working with organizations in Boston. They're very excited about this, but they really need guidance. So the final kind of big idea I wanted to throw out, which is, has also been in the space, is the idea of using existing regulations related to social clubs to take the pressure off of public consumption launches. I'm talking about small-scale, non-for-profit, democratically controlled spaces, really private safe spaces for consumption to take place. I guess one question is why would the CCC get involved with this and kind of move out of the lane? But I think if the CCC would explore this option, that it would de-risk the investment for industry folks, whether it be dispensaries or other people, to help fund this so that we could have membership fees be more reasonable. Ultimately, I believe that social, social clubs and, which are an extension of many of the activist groups that people are voluntarily participating in right now, could set a foundation for a cannabis industry that is more diverse than what we're seeing right now in Boston or across the state and a really interesting grassroots movement. And in my last three seconds, I will suggest a couple of next steps. One is creating a task force aligned with the CCC somehow to study this issue, the legal recommendations. I recommend that we both take a trip to Spain to, to study cannabis clubs over there. I think it's both, they're both interesting and politically progressive. And finally, let's, I suggest that, that equity can be advanced through creative and progressive policies and that private social clubs could be a key to that. Thank you, Ethan. Thank you.
Next speaker, I believe, is Christian Lebrun. Ian Conyers.
Good afternoon. Thank you to the commission. I'm Ian Conyers. I do government affairs for a company called Ease, where a platform that connects the knot between legal retailers, brands, and customers, allowing adults to obtain legal cannabis products delivered by drivers or employees of licensed dispensaries. I think that's very important to understand versus the gig economy. Ease not only supports licensed legal markets, thus driving tax contributions, but we support legal retailers, brands, case packers, shift managers, operational managers. And since July of 2014, we've helped dispensaries deliver over 4 million packages of product with an amazing rate at 99.998% of incident-free deliveries. The proposed regulations, as we see, considering that amount of data, just looking at the facts and data, that really ruins the scary opportunity to hurt equity applicants, in our opinion. The whole point of delivery-only licenses without warehousing is to give equity applicants an opportunity to enter the market with minimal barriers to success. Proposed regulations as written are totally cost prohibitive and they create an expensive hurdle for applicants and owners. This potentially has the opportunity to relegate victims of the This potentially has the opportunity to relegate victims of the failed war on drugs to the margins of a growing business. Beyond the cost of acquisition installation licensed businesses that have to pay continuously for data storage, as folks touched on earlier today, requiring two people for delivery instead of one makes delivery twice expensive for each of these businesses. If you can imagine, there are not many FedEx trucks rolling around with two delivery personnel inside. Cameras monitoring for lock boxes are already in place for safety. States that are early adopters right now are actually going back, as was mentioned in Colorado, in passing standalone delivery bills to combat what's been known as the Craigslist driver phenomenon, in which adult-use consumption is legalized. And from the dispensary folks will get your personal address and make that delivery anyways. Not to mention the current existing illicit market right now. Of course, you know, listening earlier to, you know, the talk about wanting to bring those folks from the illicit market to this market is another variant. Unnecessary trips make delivery inefficient for businesses and customers. Again, this isn't an opinion in particular. It's supported by facts and data of over 4 million deliveries in California and Oregon. Increasing the number of trips that drivers must make to dispensaries not only contributes to congestion, pollution, and additional expenses, but creates traffic safety issues. The requirement will increase the amount of time that deliveries take to complete. Slower legal deliveries means customers will go back to the illicit market, which we're trying to incentivize to migrate to the tax and regulated market. We believe that access is lacking in the current regulations. Cannabis delivery exists to ensure access, convenience, and the setup wouldn't make progress on either. By requiring customers to physically register at a dispensary, you create another access to both rural and urban folks who are without. Limiting delivery areas serves the unbalanced access that we already have. Technology platforms have increased safe access to the legal market. We believe this can help folks by providing logistical order tracking tools, provide an added layer of security for all parties, having third-party platforms connect businesses with customers, provide lead generation, which would help enterprising with low. Incredibly important also to remember, kind of looking at frameworks, victims of the war on drugs, creating funding. The larger the tax revenue collected from the thriving legal market, the larger amount of money that can be placed into those social equity programs. If you look directly at the state of Illinois, they were able to put 25% of the funds from tax collection into a fund called Restoring Our Communities, an additional 20% to mental health. Creating a complete marketplace with dynamic delivery is the way to go.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Robert Noron.
Right here.
Sorry. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me here and letting me speak. Appreciate it. First time here, I'm really amazed at the diversity of the issues that you guys have to deal with. I sympathize with you, but in any case. My name is Bob Noron. I'm the president of Tijuvent, a company based in Walton. We manufacture combined heat power equipment and have supplied CHP cooling equipment to most of the indoor grown facilities in the state of Massachusetts, plus elsewhere in Nevada, here in Colorado, and so forth. So we're heavily involved in that industry. So we have a couple of questions about the energy portion of the regulations, which I think the only one here brought that up.
It's okay. Commissioner Doyle's reasonable today.
Oh, great. Great. I thought, nobody probably knows about it, but I'm glad.
She does.
Yeah. We noted that the exemption of providing intensity when CHP is applied is 80%. This value seems arbitrary and probably unrealistic. You know, we understand how sized these systems, and if you were to put that 80% system in, 80% electricity from that power generation source, it would likely be oversized and very inefficient if it ran as much as it is. So we would wonder if you maybe should consider that either some sort of sliding scale or something that would look at that more realistic. The second question is regarding combined heat power CHP definition. Our product for cannabis is dominated here by mechanical CHP, which would be an engine-driven chiller. And that's where we sold, I think, 14 systems in places here in the state. Mechanical CHP is defined by the power of energy included. This is a CHP technology. And we've seen other states and other places where they've narrowed that definition to only include electrical generation. And we would hope or ask that the Department of Energy's definition would prevail in how their regulation is interpreted. And that's all I have to talk about today, and I'm glad I got to speak about energy here, only one. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Our next speaker, Nick, my head's right sharply. Alexander, and I'm sorry, I'm sure he cannot be the last name here.
Farnsworth.
Yeah, if you say so. Yeah, that looks like it.
I wasn't actually planning to say anything, but I was thinking, so it's Alexander Farnsworth. I was reflecting on a CCC meeting from January, February 2018 in this field. There were more seats, if I remember, more seats to sit in.
I truly, I have a few of these meetings. Do you remember the meeting in this field? I can't kind of remember.
Long ago, but there was less comment, right? So I think today there's been some very productive comment across the board. And it said one man had remarked that farmers have been growing the products on their land for a very long time and that the product was being smoked behind bars for a very long time. So his simple message was, you know, don't over-regulate the industry that already exists. And so I think, looking at the new draft regulations, it seems like some of them have gotten more complicated. And from a business perspective, it seems like it would add additional expenses, both from the compliance side and then more specifically from the licensing structure and the licensing fees and then also the packaging. So some of those will be outlined and submitted via email. But the other issue here is that it seems like with an illicit market that's thriving, I think that's grown and strengthened over the past 14 months. And I also believe that with the barriers of entry for SEP and PE applicants, they are, you know, while you're doing as much as possible to bring down some of those barriers, they're very high. So what we've begun to see is people attempting to sell that status. And so as someone who is an applicant in the pipeline, all of those SEP applicants and PE applicants jump ahead, which is understandable. But then to look at it from the perspective that those applicant statuses are also being sold on in the listed market, basically, it makes it a tough position because it feels like it's becoming more expensive to be moral and that everyone is doing some kind of semi-illegal is getting ahead in terms of, you know, selling illegally and also selling their application status. And so that's just, wanted to share that it's really disheartening to hear the amount of people who are closing down shop because of how long they've been waiting. And so I think, you know, the glacial rollout is very difficult to businesses of all sizes.
Thank you. Thanks. Okay, we're down to the last two pages of sign-ups, which my fingers and toes are dirty, which is two hours. So I'm going to suggest that we take a break. It's now 1:10. But we can be in a quarter or two. That should give us enough time to get through everybody that wishes to speak today. And I know I'm going to be a better listener if I have some room, so we'll leave you in a quarter or two.